Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everyone to the reorganization meeting of the Burnt Hills-Boston Lake Central School District, the first meeting of the year of the 2018-19 school year. I believe we'd like to begin the meeting tonight with a recognition ceremony for the BHBL Boys Senior Double Rowing Team. And with that in mind, I'll turn it over to Mr. Scalise and we'll go from there.
All right.
Come on up here.
Yes. Thank you for coming tonight. It's great to see a lot of the rowing community here supporting both Sam and Chase and their accomplishment. Anytime we have teams or individuals that go out and do great things, it's always nice to be able to recognize them and those great accomplishments and the things that they've done in their sport. So Sam and Chase are a team in rowing. I'm going to talk a little bit about my experience with rowing, but they're in the doubles and they went on and they won a state tournament. They won a New York State Championship in the middle of May, and that was our first state championship within our club since 2011. And there's nice banners if you have a chance to go over to the boathouse. They have banners going across the area by the fitness center. And each one recognizes all the state championships and it's nice that they're going to have another banner that they get to put up. So it's the first one in seven years and both their names will be out there for that state championship. So that's a great accomplishment. Then they went on to the, at the Nationals and they finished third in New Jersey. So overall, just a fantastic job. You know, really did a great job representing themselves in the school and the rowing community. So my quick story. You watch rowing, like certain sports you watch on TV, you're like, you know what? I think I can do it. Too bad. So my daughter's involved in rowing. She got involved this year. And of course, she tells me everything about it and how every time I go, I'm rowing or other people are rowing and we drive by, she says everything that they're doing wrong. So now she's an expert on it. So there was a day every year and it just hasn't worked out. I know Dr. McGrath had a chance to go one day. But there's a day every year where the rowing community invites people in, you know, from the school, you know, new students that are interested in rowing, just to kind of come out and check it out. So we went this year and it was our first opportunity to get in a boat. I'm like, gosh, this is bad. I've rowed before. Couldn't do it. Could not do it. The vior kept coming out and you mentioned about catching a crab. Didn't know what that was until it happened to me and I've had a bruise on my side for two weeks now. Finally gone away, but yeah, that's when you're rowing and if you're not at the same speed as everyone else and your oar gets caught and all of a sudden it jams you in your stomach. Thank God I didn't go out of the boat. I think my wife would have died laughing. But I did stay in the boat. I toughed it out, but I didn't have a bruise on my side for a good three weeks. So I got a true appreciation for what it's like and how hard it is. We were only on the water for a little bit. We only went a small distance and I was exhausted and I had a lot of trouble doing it. So you guys, you know, it's a tough sport. I know it's a lot of hard work, you know. They are unfortunately in the spring season, as we know, the month of March doesn't always cooperate and even the month of April doesn't cooperate. So they're doing a lot of indoor activities and then when they do get on the water, it's always raining. The weather's not great, but they're on the water. It doesn't matter. As long as it's not thunder and lightning, they're on the water and they're toughing it out. So I just wanted to congratulate you guys on your state championship. You know, I know everyone in our district is proud of your accomplishment. I know everyone in the rowing community is proud of that accomplishment as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Jen.
Okay. Would you guys come up and join me up here? We are so incredibly proud of you guys. I have a whereas I'm really proud to be to you. Congratulations. Yeah, tell me when I saw you. So the Burnt Hills-Boston Lake Resolution of Appreciation for a New York State Champion Boys Senior Double Rowing Team, July 10th, 2018. Whereas the Burnt Hills-Boston Lake 2017-18 Boys Senior Double Rowing Team of Chase Holtz and Samuel Creppenbacher and Coach Sarah...
Stamarowski.
Stamarowski, okay. Won the New York State Scholastic Rowing Championship at Fish Creek on Saratoga Lake on May 12th, 2018. And whereas the crew also won the bronze medal at the Scholastic Rowing Association of America Championship on the Cooper River in Camden County, New Jersey on May 26th, 2018. And whereas team members have demonstrated their dedication to crew by committing to more than 12 hours of practice each week and logging more than seven miles of rowing each day. And whereas the team has exemplified the ideals of sportsmanship, skill, endurance, teamwork, effort, and dedication to their sport. It is hereby resolved that the Burnt Hills-Boston Lake Board of Education formally acknowledges its pride in having such representatives to carry the school's district's, the school district's name and extend its congratulations to the team and coach for their outstanding efforts and accomplishments. So proud of you guys.
Sarah, come on up too.
Can I have some sugar?
Good.
Okay, yes.
You can send me that one, right?
I took a few.
What are you looking at?
I don't know.
Just want to tour photo out.
Smile, everyone. Before she sneezes.
I'm sure most people don't want to stay for the organizational meeting, but we do have one other presentation that Jen wanted to make as her final act as last year's board president. So we could just ask everybody just to hang on for one second before we transition.
Jackie, we just have a little something for you.
Oh, did you know I was home?
Because I stalked you.
Oh, you did?
Thank you for everything, all your hard work. We're so going to miss you.
Oh, thanks. This is Dottie. You'll do it again.
Does everyone know Dottie, our new board?
We got an email first, so we know where to go.
So Dottie has been here a long time and her daughter graduated this year. Her son Carl graduated a couple of years ago. She was at Charlton Heights for a long time before moving to the district office. And so she's actually pulling double duty as both mine and Mary Ellen's assistant now with Jackie's retirement. Jackie's going to continue the registration thing on a part-time basis, but other than that, it's going to be me, Mary Ellen, and Dottie holding down the board of district office as part of our restructure last budget season. So, but we just wanted to, you know, thank you again formally Jackie for everything you've done and we'll miss you being here.
Congratulations.
That concludes the presentation. If anybody wants to stay for the reorganization meeting, you're welcome to. We're going to take a 60-second break. We still on camera?
Are we live?
All right. Good evening, everyone. As the district clerk, I'd like to call the reorganization of the July 10th, 2018-19 reorganizational meeting of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education to order. If everyone could please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As is our custom here, one of the things we do is introduce everyone at the meeting who's present tonight. I'd like to start with Jackie.
Jackie Martini.
Dottie Southman.
Christopher Abdu.
David Frisaki.
Peter Sawyer.
Hi.
John Blowers.
Patrick McGrath.
Jennifer Longton.
Patrick Ziegler.
Lisa Morse.
Mary Ellen Seimer.
Tara Bennett.
Dan Biggins.
Pete Jerome.
Doug Carlton.
Andrew Wildrick.
And Jeff West. All right. We have a quick roll call and quorum check. I think we can let the record reflect that all board members here except for Don Marshall, who is, who will be here shortly, maybe just stepped out for a moment. First action item tonight is the administration of the oath of allegiance to newly elected board members. So Lisa and Dave, I'm gonna hand you a sheet. If you can start with Lisa and then go to Dave, if you could please stand, read, attach that down, please stand, read the attach, and then sign and sign the statement and bring it back down to us. So Lisa, you wanna start? We'll go alphabetically?
I'll use my card.
Okay.
I, Lisa Morse, do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of member of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education to the best of my ability.
Thank you. If you could do the same?
Thank you, of course.
I, David Frisaki, do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of member of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education to the best of my ability.
Thank you. If you could both please sign those and send them down. I will witness it and we'll go from there.
Congratulations.
My last official act in this meeting. As always, I'd like to have a motion for the appointment of Jennifer Longton as temporary chairperson of the rest of the, of the meeting.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Not further ado, turn it over to Jen.
Okay. So I didn't know I was doing this, but I like the little surprises. Keep me on my toes. Okay, so can I have a motion for the election of President of the Board of Education?
You can take nominations.
We nominations, that's my one. Okay. Can I have a nomination for the President?
I'll nominate Mr. Blowers.
Okay, and?
Since he's already sitting there, I'll second him.
Okay, any other nominations? Any other nominations? Who wants the one choice?
So now you call over.
Okay. Okay, so, so can I get the motion to, for John to be President?
So I move.
One second.
Second. All in favor?
Yeah. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
So does John take over or do you like?
The newly elected President will proceed with the vote.
Okay. So we'll take nominations for the Vice President of the Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I nominate Patrick Ziegler.
Awesome. Is there a second?
A second.
Wonderful. Are there any other nominations? Are there any other nominations? Okay, nominations are closed. I'd like to entertain a motion for both Vice Presidents.
Second.
Second.
All right, Peter and Jen. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Stand. Congratulations, Mr. Bass.
Congratulations, Mr. Blowers.
Okay, so at this point, we need to do RLS, is that right, Chris?
We, I also have to do it as well. Yes, three of us need to do RLS.
Three of, oh.
President, Vice President, Clerk.
Okay, do you prefer it's in order?
No.
You're the President.
Let's go. All right, so I, John Blowers, do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board President of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education to the best of my ability.
I, Patrick Ziegler, do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Board Vice President of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education to the best of my ability.
I, Christopher Abdu, do hereby pledge and declare that I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of New York, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of District Clerk of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education to the best of my ability.
Just while we're here, I think it's worth mentioning that the system that this board has had for, as long as I think, you know, Jackie remembers, is of the idea of rotating the President and the Vice President each year, bringing, keeping that leadership moving throughout the board is a really healthy, great tradition and a way of updoing it. So I appreciate, and I know it's a lot of work, the year when you are the President and Vice President. Appreciate you guys stepping up and the boards are working with both of me. Exciting, exciting times. And you too, Chris.
John, could I just request one thing?
Please.
Once we motion and second, could you just say who motioned and who seconded? Cause when you're listening this way, it's hard to differentiate between.
You're good. I thought it said Peter, Jen, but I might have, I might have do these things.
You did.
Okay, I'll do it, but I need to protect. Yeah. All right, so we're onto the Board of Officers. So recommended for appointment are Christopher Abdu as Clerk of the Board, Brenda Kane as Deputy Clerk of the Board, Elizabeth Grasso as Treasurer, Brenda Kane as Deputy Treasurer, Grace Need as Tax Collector, April Bushman as Deputy Tax Collector. Mr. Abdu, Ms. Kane, and Ms. Bushman receive no added compensation. So we take a motion on that? Or we're doing this whole thing as one? We do the officers as one, then we do consent agenda as one?
Yep.
Got it. Okay, so do we have a motion to accept the officers as presented? So Peter, Jen, any discussion on the appointment of officers? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
What?
No, you're, I'm sorry. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay. Jackie, do you have the setup to consent agenda?
Yep.
Is everything?
Everything, everything after that.
Oh, is it? Okay.
So I'll, I'll, I'll trust it. We're all literate. So I think we're moving all the way from...
Other appointments.
All the way from other appointments, all the way down to, where's F in here? I see E and I see G.
F is all the...
So consent agenda includes all the other...
Consent agenda includes the whole rest of the thing.
Oh, oh, there's a D, then an F, there's no E. Okay, or is there any? I can't tell.
Yes, it says consent agenda.
Oh, got it. Okay. So, so the consent agenda is the other appointments up to designations?
Completely, the whole other...
Whole thing. Okay, and the designations, and the compensation outside of negotiated contracts, and the other items. All the way through.
Oh, oh.
Any members want to pull that out? You can offer that. And then otherwise, it can be, it can be approved as a slate.
Okay. And I don't remember reading this off before, right?
Different years, people do it different ways, but.
So.
I think we can make a motion to Spencer, the reading of the full consent agenda.
Yeah, do we, the ones where we're, where we're dedicating public interest money, which only looks like it's a, three or four of these, is that worth noting? Or do we care if there, if there's money involved or not money involved?
Some of them we've talked about before.
Right, okay.
I think we should just make a motion for consent agenda and then we can discuss what I have.
Got it. Okay, terrific. So do we have a motion for the consent agenda, please?
Someone.
Second.
Okay, that's Jen, followed by Patrick. Discussion on, this is quite a few, so I'll pause here for a little bit, just to give folks a chance to glance through these, especially if we're just seeing some of these for the first time. Again, we're doing everything, F, G, H, and I, all those actions together as one item.
I don't see anything outside of what we...
But for our new members, do you guys have any questions?
Well, just the re, you know, resetting business for the new school year.
I did wanna point out, you know, that one of the other items out here is our school, the Board, the school attorney. I don't think he's raised this in years. He continues to be a great servant for us and provide great service. So appreciate, appreciate if people have a reasonable.
Definitely. He's a real asset. I'm on the phone with him every single day. Not a day goes by during, I'm not talking some issue. And a lot of times, you know, there's things he takes on. There's other things that he says, you know, some of the things that with Chris's area, with the bond, with the referendum, Capitol project work, that he'll, you know, say, this is something we should go outside. Sometimes they consult together. So we have some hourly attorneys on retainer, but for the most part, Bob, our general counsel, and he really is a great resource, not to mention the longstanding, you know, roots that he has here as well.
Other thoughts, comments, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. So I think we've now adjourned from the organizational meeting, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, a motion, okay. Okay, we got a motion from Peter and a second from Jen to adjourn from the organizational meeting. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay, we are now about to move into our regular business meeting. And so I'd like to go ahead and call the meeting, call to order this meeting of the Burn Hills Boston Lake Board of Education. I'm gonna suggest we dispense with the pledge since we've already done it, unless we object. Okay, no need for a second session tonight? Okay, terrific. This is gonna sound like a later, but we have another consent agenda. So at this point, we're approving the minutes of our, both the June 19th regular meeting and the June 15th special meeting, so the Board of Education, along with the authorization of film and textbooks, and the claims audit report. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda, please?
Second.
That's Jen's, with the motion?
Second.
You almost got your first one, Dave. It's gonna be Patrick, who's the second. And any discussion on these items? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. I don't believe there's any privilege on the floor, but we're a pretty casual crowd. Let's go right into action items then. Our first action item is personnel. Do we have a motion, please?
Second.
Patrick?
Second.
Oh, and Jen is seconding. And it looks like Mary Ellen, you've got a number of appointments here. Did you have anything?
There's a few temporary appointments and some last minute summer school appointments that needed to be made based on students' needs and services that need to be provided to students with disabilities.
Okay. All right, I don't see much on the other side of the house. Oh, yeah, I didn't think of no.
Just wanted to thank Carol Howard and Art Ettinger for their service to the district, both of which are retiring, resigning from many years of work with us in the past. And also wanted to extend a welcome. I don't believe she's here tonight, but Kristen Panichia was replacing Cindy Peterson as the Business Office Secretary next year. We're happy to have her on board.
Any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Yes.
Opposed? Abstain? Motion carries. Okay, we have the consideration of approval of a whereas to the Boys Senior Double Rowing Team. Do we have a motion, please?
Second.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry. Oh, Dave, Dave was in for a second. Congratulations. Okay, I think this is pretty non-controversial since we've already done it, but yeah, exactly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Okay. Action item three, consideration of approval of special athletic competition request for the girls volleyball team. Do we have a motion, please?
Second.
Jen?
Second.
Lisa's in the game. All right, Lisa's in. And...
I feel like we're playing Jeopardy. Lisa's on the floor. Let's get moving now.
I think we gotta score this year. Keep everybody engaged. Okay, this looks pretty straightforward. Any, any questions or thoughts, comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, motion carries. We got action item number four, consideration of approval of the 2018-19 district-wide school safety plan. Do we have a motion, please?
Second.
Second.
That's Jen and Patrick. Any?
Any changes to that plan?
No, the changes came in the one, in the next one, the building safety plans. Those are, those changes were discussed back in, in the early June executive session. They're just some minor changes to what Phil calls, what they call the functional annexes, how we respond to the different things, just with some updated thinking on, you know, response to a lockdown, response to a lockout. But for the most part, they're similar to this year.
I couldn't access these.
I gave everyone access to it a little while ago. If you go into those building ones now, they're all the same, but customized for each building. So contact information, phone numbers. But if you take a look, those are 142-page documents that Phil really spearheaded the organization of those documents. And they're just, they're very thorough. He pushes on the principals and the building safety teams to make sure that they have had eyes on those things and are familiar with it. The process of developing those plans is as much of, in the real situation, how much are you gonna maybe necessarily take that plan out? You hope you would, but in, hopefully, just the constant process of talking about them are, is as much of the value of those plans.
It's about training, right?
Right.
Well, but that's, I mean, we say the policy too, is the idea that you have a policy in place, but we need to have the training around it. So I'm assuming that, you know, well, I know that buildings go through all these trains, but are there aspects of the training that they do that may not, that may be in this document that they may need to know, that they don't regularly practice?
Well, they use, if I don't mind Patrick. They use, they use this as the basis. Every building has what's called a blurk team, the building level emergency response team, which includes all, all representation from different parts of the building, as well as local first responders who discuss and they talk about how to respond to these types of situations. They occasionally run through what we call tabletop exercises, where they say, this is a situation that occurred. They have an active shooter, they have a fire, they have a tornado warning. How would each be responding? What would you do with this situation? They go through and practice it. Throughout the year, then you lock out, lock down, fire drills throughout buildings, have the students even incorporate and practice those different things. So these plans are the basis, the building. I don't know if we're at that agenda yet.
Well, they're come together.
They're both together. But the building level plans are practiced by the buildings and it is the training that we all go through if in fact an emergency situation will occur and we need to react accordingly.
So this is all covered.
And they need to train throughout the year.
And then in addition, Peter, so of the five required trainings for all employees, the emergency response training is one. So everyone needs to log in. There's a video that they watch, that gets updated on a year-to-year basis. And there's a series of questions and then Phil tracks that. All employees, new employees, when they get hired, need to do these five trainings. So one of those is based on, on the building's safety plan. So.
Can I ask one question, another question? It might be in here, but I don't, I don't remember. I'm curious or concerned about whether or not, so you have, you're in a building and you're having a, you know, you're having a practice run of some kind, you know, does a student communicate to the parent, right? They pull out, they have a cell phone, if they have access to it, contact the parent, you know, we're in a lockdown. I mean, is that, is that, you know, I'm wondering about the communications because communications are so relatively easy that a parent could come, be concerned, a student, I think it had come up before, that kid didn't really know what was going on, or they misunderstood it was a drill. They call home to their parent, the parent thinks that there's something going on. I mean, this is, I'm just kinda worried about that.
It will happen. I mean, there's no, no way to avoid. But so the plan addresses communication, who's in charge of communication, how do we, also physical, the physical plan, you know, immediately if there's something going on where we need to set up an instant command, it's likely that the perimeter would be blocked off by law enforcement. So there would be a rendezvous point identified. Each building has its own rendezvous points identified so in the plan, so that, you know, immediately parents for pickup or, you know, reunification are set in another location. So all those things, step by step, go through in the development of those plans, kind of anticipating that that communication will go that way.
Yeah, cause I'm just worried about, like, even the fake drills.
I was gonna question that. How many, for the fake drills, I know in school I work in, teachers know. So how many, I think it sort of defeats the purpose.
Well, but it's also, I guess the two is that the concern is, you know, if it's a fake drill, the kid doesn't get it to drill, are they, in the call home, you know, are we gonna have these other things in place?
Mr. Brunson, I would assume in the back, I think we're pretty clear when we, when we have the drills, but they're clear as drills.
We're mandated to do four a year. We typically try to do three when students are in the building, one either in the evening or one in the morning with the studio staff. The first one we do each year is what I call a soft lockdown drill, which means I come on to PA and say, it's going to be a drill. Your teacher will tell you where you're gonna go. They'll go through instructions, et cetera, et cetera. The next two, we try to drill, we try to practice. They'll go through instructions, et cetera, et cetera. The next two, we try to drill, we try to practice as if it was real. Typically, when we go into that, there's a communication that's sent out to staff by email and by text. It also goes to the district office, and if it's a drill, they'll know before our staff that we're in a drill, so they can address some of those calls. It doesn't matter if we do a drill or when it's been real, we get calls regardless. We usually get calls when Boston Spaw, indoor scorching, indoor shedding on a lockdown anyways. So, you know, what Patrick said, the biggest fear is if it was a real situation, parents would flood in here. We just, we can't put a lid on student communication, just can't stop them from communicating. If it was a real situation and we had to alert the authorities, they come in and take over essentially the interests of the campus. They close it off, they screen, and we go through that process. You know, we encourage kids and when we meet with them at the start of the year, we run these drills, we would ask you not to communicate, we would ask you to wait. But it happens, it happens, it happens every time we do a fire drill, it happens every time. We could go into a lockout, which is different than lockdown. Like I said, it happened when Boston Spaw was in lockdown. We did calls while we were in lockdown, so.
Thank you.
Good question.
Better than the calls, Peter, social media. That actually blows up on social media quicker than it does on with phone calls now.
Is there any need to, there's all these different programs at the school, because it's listed here. Do we need this school policing program or is it just a research op, what is it called again?
Student research op.
Yeah. Does that, any merit in having that in there? I mean, I guess it's a living document, we can just update it as we go, right?
Right, yes.
Any other questions, comments? All right, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay. That was four, right?
Yeah.
So now we have another safety plan here. So item five, consideration of approval of building safety plans for Charles Heis, Ashley Stevens Middle School and High School.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that's Peter, followed by Patrick. And any questions, thoughts, comments on this?
That's basically the same stuff we're talking about, only this is the stuff we don't put publicly. This is in the, under, in the, in the executive side so that you guys can see them. And I did share those documents out that, that you didn't originally have access to, but and again, anytime if you get a chance to look through those and you have questions about it, you know, Phil's always happy to, and then talk about it and, you know, again, it is a living document, we're always working on these kinds of things. A whole nother aspect, we're talking about all the technology and data security, this is a whole nother world, you know, is physical plan security, student security.
Okay. Any other thoughts, questions? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Motion carries. On to item seven, consideration of payroll, oh, sorry.
Six.
Six. Consideration of, consideration of approval of the annual risk assessment report. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
That's Don, I think Jen won. So Don followed by Jen. I think it's Spike up in the cupboard earlier.
Yes, just for the record, I think we want to note that this was what discussed at the audit committee meeting immediately previous to the board meeting.
We went into details at the previous meeting.
Okay, anything that needs to be collected here and what we're approving tonight? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, now we're going to item seven, consideration of approval of the payroll audit report. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Don followed by Patrick. Lisa's still a little bit faster. So, any, yeah, anything you want to share, Chris?
Same as above, this was discussed in detail with the audit committee previous to this meeting.
Yep. Okay, terrific. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, going to action item number eight, consideration of approval of a resolution for an emergency application of pesticides in Stevens Elementary and High School fields. Do we have a motion, please?
So moved.
And, okay, so I think that was Lisa with the first and Jen with the second. Mr. Tigger, this is your, or?
Yeah, just looking to do an application at Stevens and spot application here at the high school. The board granted me permission to do an application about three years ago. We were losing the, the grounds at Stevens Elementary to grubs, which was enticing. Other vermin that come eat the grubs, and it was affecting the play area, it was affecting the playground area, and it was, like you say, it was enticing other animals to come on the grounds, especially during the school day. We've come three years, we brought the turf back, but now it's showing signs of degrading again, so rather than let it go and get bad, we'd like to treat it. And here at the high school, we're having an infestation of weeds in heavily used, used areas of the fields, and I'd like to treat them to try and keep them from getting bad as well. Try and follow the intended law, which is not to abuse the use of herbicides and pesticides, but at the same time, keep the integrity of our natural grass.
Yeah, for some of us that are newer, weren't here three years ago, can you describe, it's a, it's an application, there's some signage, how long is it?
Yes, we have to follow New York State law. We have two certified applicators on, on staff, on the meeting staff. We follow, we post, we get notice, and then I have to follow the guidelines for notifying people ahead of time that we should be notified, and then also a follow-up report later in the year saying that we, we did apply this year in the event there's any concerns. So there's a whole, whole book of regulations I have to follow to do it.
All right, terrific.
Dan, we're on the topic, and I remember all this from Chris, it was right after I came onto the board, we talked about this with Stevens, I think it was a little quickly, almost like little balls that we get all over that field. Something we can do at the same time is that I don't remember where we left the final size, I think it was because it was like this, that's to be an emergency resolution.
Yes, there's nothing we can do without doing an emergency, and part, this product that we use, like it did three years ago, will again affect that again.
It'll help that.
Yes.
Good, good, thank you.
Any questions for Dan or comments? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Pesticide away. Action item number nine, consideration of approval of a behavioral health center satellite agreement with Parsons Child and Family Center. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Dan followed by Peter? Anybody? Just talk a little bit to the zero area.
This is a new, new program for us next year. We're entering into an agreement with Northern Rivers to provide onsite counseling support for families. There will be no costs to the district. We will have space at both the middle school and the high school, and students from the elementary school could access the services at the middle school, and then the counselor would also be here at the high school. We need to provide space, a phone line, lock file, and an area for a counselor to meet. And then the services are paid for by the family's health insurance plans, so.
Do we have been put into the counselor himself?
Yes. Yes, in fact, we had an initial meeting here on site for where two staff members came from Northern Rivers, met with our social workers and building principals that were available to come to the meeting to discuss and answer questions that the social workers had.
Has Chris been selected?
No, we, we, this requires quite a bit of approval outside of both Northern Rivers and the school district, so that approval has to be done first, and then
Who else has needs to approve that?
I know you were going to ask that. I believe it's Office of Mental Health.
So is there one for the high school, one for the middle school, or there's one?
We're starting with one.
Okay.
So there, these are licensed professionals?
Yes.
Certified social workers, that's.
The goal, there are times when students need outside counseling, and because of different reasons, they can't get to outside counseling services, maybe because of distance and, you know, transportation issues, by having the service offered onsite here in the district, it's moving towards more of those wraparound services that the district could support by providing the space, and really, there's no cost to the district. We did have counsel look over the agreement and made that, Northern Rivers made the changes that the district asked for as well.
The question was credentials, so is there a standard in terms, I mean, because a lot of people who work for these type of agencies have different levels of credentialing?
They'll have an LCSW, and they'll also have a nurse practitioner available for medication.
And I think you had covered this in the past, but there could be family counseling at these times as well, correct?
One of the regulations that Northern Rivers has is that the families are involved.
They, they want the family.
They want the families involved.
Well, while I've got the floor, then I'll take a quick opportunity to thank Mary Ellen for spearheading this, because we heard this at absolutely every review last year, and Mary Ellen brought this up, I think, early last year, and I know, especially having Don before it now too, and benefiting from his expertise, we really were after this at every meeting, and to see it come through, I think is tremendous for the district, so thank you so much for seeing this, it's tremendous.
The hope is that it, it happens as early as the opening of school, but, you know, it may take some time to get it off the ground.
Sure.
First part is this agreement.
Utilization will take some time, I think. People get comfortable with it, understand what it is, how it gets paid for, and, you know, quality of the students will be a big issue. But when people feel comfortable with the individuals, they come back and all that stuff.
You said family's health insurance, that would be whatever it may be.
Mm-hmm.
If they're indigenous.
They take a lot of, they take Medicaid.
Okay.
Usually a copay would be associated with that. I think families might not want, families might be required to pay something, which in the field is always a good thing, you know, it's, it increases their motivation. If they have to write a little check at the end, they work harder at it.
It's good, great job.
Yeah, Mary Ellen, thank you so much. It's only going to benefit the students and
It was a team, it was a team effort by the administration as well.
And this is just another sign of you guys, you know, thinking outside the box and doing, doing right by our students, so thank you.
It's a great agency too, for some.
That's what we're hoping for.
While we're on a high, I'll, I'll take the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, action item ten, consideration of approval of AR one five double O, which is the use of district facilities. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
That's Patrick, followed by Peter. Discussion?
I just want to know what, does something change on here?
Yeah, this is the, this is the AR that requires board approval, as we've talked about in the past, so each year when we look at, Joe just left, but Joe Schleese oversees the, all of our facilities used, so anybody wants to sign out any space in the district, they go through Joe, he collects the insurance, required insurance certificates, and he speaks, you know, makes whatever arrangements, figures out what the fee's going to be, and so there was just, he brought a couple of things to Chris that.
Can I, can I highlight just one on there? Very few changes, the changes are in red on the document, and one that substance said, if you look at the YMCA, we are increasing what they are charged for providing their YTR programs after school from four hundred dollars a month to two thousand dollars a month. That was an agreement between the YMCA and the district that we would hire afternoon security for each of the elementary schools, and we would split the cost from the YMCA. So the mechanism we used to split that was to increase the monthly fee they would pay us to do that, so that's really the most significant change. Other than that, very minor tweaks to certain areas.
This number five here is written in red, rare and unusual circumstances.
Correct. Mr. Schleese wanted to ask for this, and he, I wish he was here to describe it more. In rare and unusual circumstances, there are organizations that may want to donate sporting equipment, volleyball nets, for example, if you have a group that's using our facilities for volleyball, and part of that is maybe the wear and tear on the equipment there, they want me to say, well, could we, in lieu of monetary compensation, could we replace the volleyball stanchions, I believe is what they're called, or something of that like, and just go with it that way. So we decided to recommend to you to add that section, and rare and unusual circumstances, with the approval of the superintendent, they could accept that type of non-monetary compensation in lieu of what the standard fees might be.
The, the one fee for the YMCA?
Mm-hmm.
Is going from four hundred to two thousand?
Yes, that's, one of the agreement we had with the YMCA was to add afternoon security, and they agreed to split, split the cost.
We all agree, sat down and meditated times on that.
Oh, okay. But there's different services or whatever, I guess.
So now they'll have, we're going to have a single point of entry, just like it is during the school day, right up until the last elementary school, students walk out the door. And the doors will be locked on the outside after, after hours, all the way around the buildings, starting on September first.
So using the new Black Box Theater too, that's how that's going to be?
Oh, we're hoping. We, we, nobody's requested to use it yet, but it is, it's a nice space. We wanted to make sure we included that in case anybody does request it.
Maybe the board ought to run it out, do a, tell the bands against students.
Yeah.
We'll be changing that.
Yeah, there you go.
Put the green screen anywhere you want us to be.
It actually might be a good idea, you know, does Patrick try to market some of these facilities, just increase?
Yeah, I believe one of the things, yeah, he does try to market it. I don't know if we specifically marketed the Black Box Theater as of yet, but we have, the turf field is, whenever it's available, not used by the school, he knows, make community groups and other groups aware of it as a potential revenue source for the district. And not just as a revenue source, it's also a community service. We have great facilities, we want people to partake in them as long as it's cost neutral to the district, so.
There's a lot of theater groups out there that might be interested. They're putting the Black Box off the turnip.
So I have an important edit to maintain the integrity of the document. On page eleven, it lists all the frequencies of the radio stations, and as a public music fan from the seventies, I recall WFLY is actually ninety-two point three, not ninety-two point zero.
You still listen to it.
I believe they have an even number of frequencies, so if you wanted to edit it to be ninety-two point three, that'd be accurate.
WFLY.
The caller is correct, but I think the Federal Communications Commission has it at ninety-two point three on the dial.
Is the official mailing address for the school still the P.O. box?
Well, there's, there's, that is the official mailing address, except for organizations like the federal government that require a physical address. In that case, it's immediately.
Okay, any other thoughts, comments, questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstained? Okay, I'm going off script for a second. I understand our student rep may be here. Bella, you're welcome to come on up.
I will apologize to my party, you said everyone, it was a missed occasion on my part.
That's okay, that's okay. We're glad you're here and welcome. You've only missed some of the reorganization stuff, the fun stuff starts in a minute when we get to discussion, so thank you for being with us.
Yeah, just a comment, you fill in some big shoes or?
Oh, yeah.
Well, not starting off on a good note. We've noticed the role of fans and our expectations get higher every year, so we're going to start lowering those. We'll reverse that trend.
It is an important role, and you represent the entire student body of the district, which is we saw in detail that we
I think we mentioned that when Haley left, that Noah was one of, actually, six students who applied for that position.
Becoming competitive.
Yeah, very competitive spot.
What did you, what did you do to, to base investors? Did you have a slogan or something?
Didn't have a slogan. I would have won my SGO election if I had a better slogan.
Sorry to bring that up.
No, no, there was an electronic form and I submitted it, and they were happy with my candidacy statement, and
No, one of them was just "Abdo it" back in the day. Chris has this for junior class president. Kids don't get that slogan today, probably. Back then it worked well.
Nothing really goes with Van Oostermaat.
Well, welcome, glad you're here. Actually, item eleven is consideration of acceptance of a donation of VR, virtual reality hardware and software from Global Foundries. Oh, I remember seeing this. Do I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, that's Jen, followed by Peter. This was exciting, this is in the library, right, or the media center now? Yeah, sounds like a big, big deal.
It's exciting.
Yeah, great. Any, any?
We'll get, once we
Once we have it set up and exactly right, we'll bring everybody in there for a tour and, you can put the goggles on and test it out.
The exciting, the exciting thing about the project is that it provides something for everyone, that's why it's in the media center. I mean, the, the different software that's being developed could be something that benefits a world language, you know, you could be touring, you know, Paris, walking around in Paris, or you could be doing biology, you know, you could be dissecting, you know, a cadaver, literally, and that's the kind of immersion you get. However, what puts it to the, to the cutting edge, I think, is that what the way that they talked about, they talked about it being a sandbox for further development and writing code to develop more, and they, the, the way that the, the guy from, the, the, the person who heads this up at Mary Ellen's friend, she, he and Mary Ellen put it up, and he, he's a really neat guy.
New friend?
Yeah, I like him a lot.
And what he says is, you know, with, there, like, no one else in the world, everyone in the world is at the cutting edge of doing this, like, it's not, like, there's a huge amount of people who are writing all this stuff, so with our computer science program and the talent that we have coming through and being developed there, we could have kids writing things and learning in an area that's right, right at the cutting edge, and it really is a steam thing, to think about it, I guess, and quite a combination, I think, so we're excited for.
And we had Kathy Perry and Mike Mozell attended a full day training with staff members from Global Foundries, they invited teachers. They're putting four of these setups in, in area districts, as well as in a college as well. And so two of our teachers went for the full day of training and participated in activities, and so Kathy Perry, being the computer science teacher, the lead computer science teacher